Okay.
Yeah.
So attorney's one.
He's on the main camera.
Attorney is one.
I don't know if that's gonna pick up though.
Bobby Oz is off.
So, um, on that, okay, so, Plenary Board meeting opened, a minutes approval you said?
Okay, minutes of it to approve, uh, minutes of these five-five meeting.
Right, motion to do so.
Second.
Full in favor?
Aye.
Aye, shall the vote be announced? Okay, uh, next up, four forty-one Main Street, looks like we're, we're rolling on schedule here. So, motion to open up the hearing?
So motion.
Second.
Full in favor?
Aye.
Okay, shall the vote be announced? Present parties. Who's presenting?
I'm starting and, uh...
Okay.
Just let me hand you these plans.
Okay, quickly, we're gonna try to, we, we got a lot of people on the list today, we added a few, so we're gonna get through. Um, question came up on sidewalks while we're, while you're setting up, I know that one's taken out, do you have a timeline to put that one back in?
No, uh...
Okay.
Yeah, sidewalk is going to be, actually, I met with the, uh, the community trail people about a week ago, and they're in the insurance vehicles.
Yeah.
They're, uh, they're gonna, it's gonna be behind. And, uh, they have, like, people are working, probably, uh, probably, they're, uh, down there.
Okay, so, roughly, on the sidewalk, the time?
We're trying to do it down now, yeah, I'd like to do it on the sidewalk.
Yeah, I'd like to do it down quick too, so, yeah. All right, second issue came up, um, I understand the lights are adjusted, um, your landscapers, Biscara? I guess they're starting early again, and on Sundays.
Uh, they were down, down there on one Sunday morning, and they did talk.
Okay, they did it again, you want us to call them, or?
He hasn't been down since then.
Uh, what day was he down?
He did it again, that was about two Sunday, three weeks ago.
When was he down then?
We have, um, pictures, they were there this past Sunday, the Sunday before.
Okay.
They left at seven thirty this past Sunday, they were there this morning, both crews pulled out before seven, they were there at six fifty.
So...
Backup alarm.
You wanna call them, or you want me to call them?
Uh, I'd be glad to call them, uh...
Do they know that they can't?
Yes.
Roll before seven, and do they know, no Sundays at all?
They do not.
So who's running the show, if they keep showing up on Sundays?
Well, I'll tell you, I have a guy on site there at, uh, at six thirty every morning.
Yeah.
And his job is to make sure that, no, there's no activity down there.
Even on Sunday?
No, he's not there on Sunday.
Yeah, that's, that's what happened.
Nobody should be down there on Sunday.
Yeah.
And he was down there on Sunday, and I told him, he says, you cannot be down there on Sunday.
Yeah, okay.
There's gonna be a problem, there's gonna be a problem with him and I, if he's down on Sunday.
Okay, okay.
You know?
All right, we get this, I, I wanna, just let me know what's going on with that, or if we have to make another call, we'll do it, but, yeah, they can't be doing that.
I'd work with you on that.
Yeah, the lights, um, were adjusted when?
Uh, just last Wednesday or something.
Okay, have the lights been a problem since the last couple days?
It's not, it's not, it's like living in a space.
But the two that were, that we identified, are the, are those?
Right, they're not, they're not straight, not facing.
Okay, all right, so those are, those are the two big ones, so we'll...
Those are down right now.
All right, and we'll continue to look at those other ones, do you have, did the other ones get canted down yet?
We've, we've turned everything down that we can.
All, around the whole perimeter?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, what about the berm and the fence?
Yeah.
You know, on the, uh, Wharf Lane Drive?
The landscape plan, and, and Bob, we were trying to get you in the loop on this too.
On the new plan, you can see it's, uh, we've taken that, uh...
Representative, or, Larry? Did the town clerk get a copy of these? Yeah?
No.
Okay.
He's, he's showing it, yeah.
Okay, so, show us, uh...
These are the two buildings that, uh...
Okay, right here.
Eric adjusted the lights on.
Right.
There's a, gonna be a...
Where's the landscape plan here for that?
It's on the next sheet.
Okay.
Uh, this is the berm you're talking about, a little fence on it.
Right, and the existing fence is gonna have what on it, a screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
This, this was waiting, well, this wasn't, but, there's a fence here, and a fence over here that's gonna be repaired, that was waiting for, uh, approval of our determination we filed with the Conservation Commission.
All right, are all these, are all the sections of that fence on Wharf, I mean, I didn't inspect each one of them, but, are they all completely repaired, or is there still a couple bent?
Oh, there's gotta be some more repairs, yeah.
They're all repaired except for the gate, one gate is bent and is being taken out and replaced.
Okay, so, so we still got some fence work to do.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
All the fence work has been done.
Except...
At both sides.
Except the gate.
Except what's in the two hundred foot buffer there.
Everything except for, it's, it's...
From down, we couldn't do anything.
Okay, okay, so...
But that's been subsequently approved.
Okay, so we still got some fence work to do on that. Okay, show me sheet two on landscape. Bobby, on, um, just to jump the highway for a second, on the landscape plan on Wharf...
Yeah.
Have you been down there?
Yeah.
Yeah, Eric and I walked in, and, um, I was out there with, uh, some of the residents too, looking at it, um, some of that Eric owns, and, uh, some of that the town owns?
The last base block.
Where the scrub and the, some of the tree work in there within the right of way?
Yeah.
This pitch here.
Yes, on Wharf Lane, so, you, as, as part of your duties, you, you do a normal tree trimming, I know.
Where are you talking about, that, uh, is this on Main Street?
Around the cul-de-sac, yeah, on Wharf.
Wharf Lane.
Wharf Lane.
It's outside the property.
Yeah.
Right, so Bob would have to do his work.
What do you mean?
Why do you wanna do anything?
Well, there's a lot of, there's a lot of scrub and...
It might open up more.
Tree damage over the years, yeah?
I'm just thinking it might open up more if...
Exactly.
Yeah.
I agree. That has never been touched by a landowner or by the town, it is, it's just underbrush that grows, the wildlife lives in there, little birds, there's wild blueberries.
So they don't wanna touch it.
Okay.
So you'd rather leave it the way it is?
Nothing to do with this plan anyways.
It's being protected from what he's putting in.
Okay, so...
It'll be more of a buffer.
Never greens and everything that's there. It's a natural buffer that's been there for fifty something years.
Okay, I don't think the intent was to take anything out, but just the dead stuff.
Well, he's already gone in and cut down all the wild blueberries, and then he's gone in and he's cut down two trees, and that's why we disagree that the fence is repaired, it's not, I invite you to come down and view it.
We just, we just confirmed that it's not in that area, so...
But, out in the front, it's not fixed yet.
Okay, all right, so...
It's not just the gate part.
What area are you talking about here?
She's talking about here with the, um, with the berms, so they don't see the, in the area here.
Okay.
Okay, and then, um, you know, what I was talking about that side.
Where, where is the area that, that the landscaping shown in the right of way for Wharf Lane?
It's not.
No, this is cul-de-sac here.
Right, no, no, there was a question.
Okay.
Yeah.
I got you.
Yeah, for, 'cause it's not yours.
So, what, what landscaping don't you want me, want Mr. Howard to touch?
We're gonna have to put you in touch with the residents over there to see what, what it is over there, uh, when I was there, there was a lot of dead.
He can do what he's doing here on his own property, you don't want him to go onto Wharf?
No, no, he can't.
No, he can't, that, that's where Bob would have to go.
But down along their fence towards the, the back of their property line, that's what we're concerned.
Yeah, what it is on Wharf Lane, this, this, uh, brush, and they wanna leave it for, uh, little buffers.
Well, we were proposing to put a berm in here.
Yeah.
Have you shown this plan to them? The plan in the back, would you like to come forward to take a look at this?
Turn this one around, Larry, turn it around so they can see.
We just wanna get this right on the landscaping, if we have to revisit it, you know, just at another time for...
This, this is a proposed berm to help screen your property.
The same as what you got over here?
Yeah, that'll be with a fence on it, and, uh, the board, the board in...
It only comes down as far as, yeah, so, we're gonna have the dirt, the big dirt mound, and...
Yeah, but it'll be landscaping.
I mean, the trees are already dying here, there's seven of them that are brown.
There's a few dead, I didn't count the number.
Yeah, and I've talked to Mark McKee.
They'll take care of that.
That's...
Mark, when I walked the sidewalk for me, noted what was...
Hey, how are you?
So what, we did, he's done some landscaping here and here, nothing out onto the street, but we were proposing to put this berm in.
Yeah, what are you gonna do, do you have to...
They did everything, including the berm, and I'll address this.
I don't know.
I'm not worried about that, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, hey, you put it in the, in the winter.
They're questioning whether the gate that's at the end of Wharf Lane, whether that has to be left open.
Can they put the berm, continue the berm like how they have it, and they come down the side?
I think so, it's up, what was that, Eric, was that something you wanted? The gate?
You know where you, the gate is? Yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna block the gate, I'm gonna block everything but the gate.
So, and that's gonna leave it wide open at the end of the road.
But the gate'll be closed.
Which is why we want, it's always closed, but it's wide open to the dirt, the noise, you know what I mean?
They can put the skin on the gate.
They can put fabric.
And he cut down some of the trees on the town property.
They can, they can put a fabric on the gate like a fence.
Oh, so then, what'll that look like?
Well, that looks good, stockade fence on...
Yeah, we want a stockade fence, I mean, that's what the other property owners have.
No, they could put stockade on the chain link gate. They could do something like that.
Eric's already talked to, back a fence across the street on the screening of fences.
Just for expediency and, and, you know, we're not gonna solve all these issues right there with that, can we, can we leave a flexible landscape plan? Anybody agree with that? So we, if we have to tweak it within...
You mean, you go back, you, you do a future sidewalk?
Yeah, yeah.
And you want us to tweak it?
You okay with that?
That's fine.
From that, yeah, okay.
One other question, if I had, if I had, the proposed fence or the new, uh, berm, when is that going to be, it's unspecified with the plan?
It's gonna be, isn't it screened with, chain link with screening?
Give a picture?
You're talking about the berm, with the berm is gonna be, you, you, the, the plan shows a new berm, the fence is on, yes, what's the fence gonna be?
Fence is gonna be chain link, six foot, with the blind on it.
Yes, it's empty, it's up. The chain link already exists, it's fallen apart, it's been there fifty years, all the other abutters have a ten-foot stockade wooden fence, plus the berm. We're closer to the activity than they are.
So what's...
I'm Larry Kelly, Kendall Construction, I did all the work on this project for Eric, you know, we started out with a lumberyard that, you know, was a mess, for, for all intensive purpose, it was a brownfield, and no one could've done some, what he did there, except the substantial, as far as this berm go, the berm was elective, Eric did it because he wanted to raise the elevation of the trees, we did it in December, if any trees are dead, we'll certainly replace the trees, okay? All the abutters don't have a berm, the berm is basically in front of your house, now Eric wants to go around the corner, okay? The berm's gonna be seeded, there's not gonna be any dust, the reason he did the berm is he wants to absorb, absorb, absorb noise and prevent, to get the trees high. Eric's spending money like crazy to make everybody happy, and, you know, you are unhappy, but, you know, you had a lumberyard with probably fifteen hundred trips in and out a day, now you have...
Let's, let's get the fluff out of the way now, please.
Okay.
Let's go with facts.
Okay.
Okay, we've been there thirty-five years, you know what the lumberyard was, okay? So let's not revisit that, okay?
This is something...
We have many people waiting their turn.
Yeah, so, for the landscape plan...
No berm is put up across the street and then all down Wharf Drive.
The berm is on Eric's property, the berm is on Eric's property, and the point was...
We need to have some decorum, and they need to present everything, and then at the end have a question and answer thing.
Yeah, we're trying to get through this, the, the solution to the problem on the landscaping is we, we gotta revisit it, onsite, everybody there, we're not gonna do it on a piece of paper right now, and, but I do wanna nail some of these things down, we got landscapers going out that should not be going out on Sundays, we gotta fix that, we've gotta fix for that already, sidewalk issue, okay, that's being addressed right now, uh, fence is still gonna be repaired, we got landscape to go back in, the trees, I wasn't worried about those, I knew they would have to be changed at some point.
No, they're changing them, let's hear what they have to do.
Okay, so we got other people on Sunday?
Some of them might not be changing.
No, they're not?
But that, does that come under the...
Are they staying, or are they going?
What's that have to do with the planning board?
That doesn't come under the site, site plan review.
If they get hours of restriction under, under the special permit.
It doesn't come under it.
So, um, what else are we presenting on this here tonight?
The special permit from who?
Uh, on us, the zoning board gave the hours. That wasn't, we didn't put hours on it.
See, as Bob said, let us make our presentation.
Yeah.
Then move on to audience participation. Okay, as, as you're aware, the, I'm not presenting anything else on plan at this point, I may point to it a little later, there was Peter Williams and our engineer, Mike Rizzotti from the SHON, that have gone back and forth on various issues, we, John Clement from NEED is our environmental consultant, uh, you've seen all of that stuff, and, about two weeks ago, I think it was on May ninth, we did a sidewalk with, uh, Peter, Mr. Williams and two members of the board, and along with our engineer, Mike Rizzotti, I think that helped a lot because Mike, primarily for Mike and Peter, 'cause they were both on site, and they could discuss...
Okay.
Say things and discuss various issues. All of that input has been incorporated into these plans, uh, we agreed to the final recommendations in Mike's report, we lost five or six items, I mean, in Peter's report. We also submitted in these plans, uh, plan for phase two, which is showing additional buildings over in this area. That's been incorporated into the plans. Just a minute here, wait for a second. Eric's, has, decided to say is proposing additional berm, replacing fences and those kind of things, which we'll change. With, uh, I think I mentioned it before, we've been in front of the conserv, Eric's been in front of the Conservation Commission, there's a determination that they are working on, and approved it, that will allow us to do the work that's on the two hundred foot buffer of the river, which isn't substantial, putting a new front on this building and repairing these fences. And with that, I mean, we're pretty much in a, we're in total agreement with Mr. Williams' comments, and, uh, we've requested the board approve the site handling, uh, I would assume you've seen, uh, the stuff that John put together along with the procedure for any tenants to fill out and submit to the town.
I haven't seen that myself, but, when we were asking for it, I emailed it.
Yeah, that's, like, it's, it's been emailed to Bob, I think.
Right, I sent it to you too, but I got a copy of...
Okay, that's Peter. Okay, thanks.
Before I sit down, I'd like to see Peter, the two gentlemen with me, would like to say anything?
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, the blind, that we're talking about, the fence blind, that's gonna be down on, uh, Wharf Lane there, we're also gonna put that fence blind on Main Street, that was a recommendation that Peter made, uh, for, for store times there.
Down here.
So, I don't talk, talk offense, they're gonna be doing that this week, so...
Peter, have you seen what that looks like, the blind?
No, I haven't.
Okay, do we have a picture?
I don't, I could get your picture.
Or get him a sample.
Yeah, it's gonna be out this week.
Remember the hazardous materials, you talked to me about you had lockers for everything in the buildings at this point.
Yes, and, for the, for the minimal amount of, uh, playroom material.
Relative to the NEED report?
Yes.
Okay, you're gonna hold them to what, uh, basically the NEED report was talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
And any, anybody else who wants to pull above that, fills this out, you know, be submitted to the fire chief and to you people.
Okay.
Playroom cabinets have all been purchased and, and, I mean, processed and placed wherever needed, and recommendations from the consultant, and we're working with them on, uh, resolving any, any issues there.
Peter, is there anything else to add on this?
Well, I'd like to just, there's a, as, there was a long list of items that were, you know, outlined in my initial reports, and, uh, and they have addressed, uh, many of these items, um, although some of them, I, I, I think for the record, that the board should, uh, you know, including the decision, make sure that it's fully understood in the future what's gonna be required out of the site, like the, um, one of the things, that's, they're, they're showing two, uh, two Watership Protection District boundaries on this, one is based on the town's definition, and one is the current Mass GIS, I mean, technically, because your regulations specifically refer to a map or no, you know, update under the, uh, Mass GIS system, the, the one that's by the town's definition is shown, but we know that the actual, well, current one is in a, um, a further to the north, I think in consideration of your decision, you should, you know, take that into account, that the district may extend further into, that the, the importance, the aquifer zone may actually extend further into the site, and you should consider that in your decision.
You wanna show them, on the plan, those two lines?
I think we, we, we looked at that before, but you have this line here, which is basically, you know, taken from the town map, which is your record, but if you look at Mass, uh, Mass GIS, it's out here, that's zone one, two.
Legally, I think it's the town boundary, but I think in working with the applicant, you can agree to use the Mass GIS as the...
We have no objection to that, it's this building, in this building that was in that zone two to begin with, so it's, uh, if you wanna write down the notes, it's building B one oh two and B one oh one.
I'm not so sure it's there, but I thought maybe this is, is this the town line, except for what?
That's the town line, this is the other one.
It's referred to, the, the, the regulations, the zoning biographer refers to that plot to a map.
Oh, I see, so the Mass, the Mass GIS zone two, yeah.
So we're not gonna be able to do anything that's in zone two?
No, I don't have, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, so that should be according to the thing in your decision.
So it's one oh, B one oh one and B one oh two.
Okay, what else?
Well, if we accept GZA's comments and...
I'm trying to see if there's anything else.
...report, okay, I mean, that's pretty much, you're gonna, you know, his hazardous material environmental policy report, okay, I don't know if you wanna get hit with the, the, uh, Board of Fire Prevention Regulations, I mean, you know, it's, it's deep.
Well, that was the other, if, if you know, I had a couple of, you know, resolved comments in that, more, so the incorporation of the recommendations of the NEED report...
Yeah.
Should be, you know, a, a condition of approval.
Right.
So that it's clear, you know, where, you know, what's gonna be required in the future, again.
Are you in agreement to that, the, his report, and the NEED report?
Yep, yes, yes, and I'm continuing to work with John, with, uh, with, with the consultant. Um, and then, going back to page four, we do have in my additional comments, they've really, they don't have property bounds or actually property lines shown on this plan, now, this project is a little bit different, is that there's really no new buildings, all the new retail buildings is, you know, clearly needs any setbacks, and, uh, just be sure that the board is comfortable with accepting that, um, all the other buildings, there are some buildings that have been existence for, you know, many, many years that are close to the property line, which it wouldn't be, you know, in a, you know, in, uh, impact if the zoning, if the property line was a little off wrong because of pre-existing...
Yeah.
Have you pinned anything or found any pins?
Well, it's, what he's talking about is, is buildings down by Johnson's Creek, which would run into a problem, it's, but...
They're there.
They're there, they were there, they're there, um, I'd like to see them disappear, you know, at some point. Where'd you get those totem poles anyhow?
It was, that's these totem poles. It was, that's these totem poles.
The, uh, now, when you put the, the, the proposed new addition buildings in there, I mean, is that, can you go up to that square footage? Remember, you, I think you, you went down from the existing square footage?
Yes.
Well, what do those new buildings do?
I think the area within the buildings is still paved.
Yeah, it's shown on the table.
Well, I'm talking about square footage in buildings. You had a total square footage in buildings in the beginning, when you bought the property, then you took some stuff down, went down on another total square footage. Now, if you go to add some other newer buildings, I mean, where does that put you? I'm just thinking ahead before.
It would obviously put us over what's existing.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, if you go back to the Board of Appeals, I mean, you're gonna limit yourself at that point. I mean, is that something better at that point, that you might, you might take some down?
Well, it's on the zoning table up, up there. So it's eighty-seven to one eighty.
Yeah, I just, I just, I just don't know if that's gonna become a, a situation in the future. If you understand where I'm going.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, we're, everything is on this plan. And, and I, you know, we have decided to take the forty B off the table, to see.
Yeah.
Because of the, you know, I, I, hey, listen, I'm looking to get along with everybody.
Another forty B drop bites of dust, is that it?
Well, it's not a town's problem, it's not my problem.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'm just, I'm just, I think in, in talking to the majority of the neighbors down there.
Yeah.
They would prefer the forty B be gone.
Yeah.
And they would prefer that we have a continuation of what we're doing.
Yeah.
Just makes more sense.
Yeah.
Less traffic, it's quieter. Less lighting, less everything.
So, where else, Peter?
Okay, and then, um, on page four, I did have, based on, on my site, the site visit that we performed and the provided plan, a couple of items that would come up. They are showing a dumpster, with two dumpsters, and typically those are screened just for containment of trash and visual effects, it's not, you know, impact. There has to be some handicap parking, if, if you have to show parking by A, A B and A D A, there's a certain percentages that have to be provided. Make sure disabilities get from that.
Get the, get a.
Is it showing it? There is some, there is some, I thought there was, but they weren't showing up on the plans. But they probably need more with the number, if you have a hundred, you probably need four, five or six of them.
And it's four.
Four, okay. This front building would be right there at the front, to the right. And then we talked about that it doesn't appear that the access lane is any compliance.
Right, that's gonna be replaced, or repaired.
Rectifying.
Good word.
And I, I couldn't recall when I was out the site, I didn't know if there was, and it wasn't shown on the plan whether there's gonna be sidewalk ramps at the entrance, for the sidewalk. You've approved that here, it should have sidewalk ramps.
Yes. The plan is for you and Bobby or Caroline to get together, because it's, it's jurisdiction.
And also that, and there's a rails trail.
Right.
That's been approved, the engineering's been approved, and that's gonna be, actually take a right, coming from Georgetown, that would take a right going Main Street towards the center of town, so.
And Eric, you met with the rails trail people?
Yeah.
Yes.
So that'll be coordinated with them.
And, you know, try to get Larry and you together to lay that out.
Yeah.
Make sure we're compliant, certainly we have to be, yeah, that's what, plus the people to provide it, usually baby carriages or things like that.
And as far as the ADA goes, the existing building prior to this had none. We poured both entrances with the required slope, the sidewalk was done with ADA slope, and it's gonna meet the curving with the flare for the wheelchair. As far as, as far as the finished code, when we're done, he's gonna stripe all the parking lot lines and there'll be HP parking lots, as well as the sign on both sides of that walkway.
Okay.
I, I'm not aware of the formula, but it's, they showed them.
Right, there should be two handicap regular and two vans on that, with a hundred.
Also, Peter, did you check the ramp going into the, uh, the front building?
That's the one we're looking at, the right kind of.
Peter brought it up, Mike said you're right, and we'll fix it, or.
Rectify.
I don't use those big words.
I also had a, a comment, they are now with the, you know, showing the, the striking for the parking, we have a number of parking spaces that are perpendicular to Johnson's Creek, with a very steep slope right off of it. And I thought it was just good practice to put a button on there.
Those are over there.
Slide off.
Right there?
Yeah, right there. And then, as I mentioned before, I was curious of the type of fence that was gonna be put on the new burner down by Fourth Lane, that wasn't specified on the plan. It should be specified in the plan, so it's clear in the future, you know.
Yeah, we can add that to the final plan and we'll get the board, the sample, maybe. So are you suggesting a guardrail?
A guardrail?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's. Telephone poles or the standard guardrails?
Yeah. It's a steep little area. And the other thing that came up was this, I do recall in the private, right now with this whole hatched area, you see the hatched area?
Yeah.
They're calling off for bulk storage. For this phase, until the, you know, for this phase until phase two is done. It should always be clear, I think, on the site plan, that the uses proposed should be specified, there should be some specification, whether it's bulk storage or one. And I would think that there probably should be some additional screening, since the bulk storage is going right up to here. And then we also have the question that this bulk storage now is, is within the aquifer protection district, some of it. So it's certainly a concern of identifying what materials will be placed or stored in that area.
Okay, that's, that's on page four. Okay, anything else that's popped up since this report?
No.
Okay, alright.
Why don't you just be real careful with that, that's all.
Alright.
Alright.
So, um.
Alright.
Alright, we got just a couple minutes, because we got a busy schedule, so it's.
Real quick, I'd like to be part of the decision on that fence on the ground.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna have a, a second meeting on this, or third, whatever it takes. That's, that's the flexible plan, we can't nail that down right now. Anyone else wanna add any other comments for that, before we close this out? Okay, so, um, motion to close?
I thought we would.
Closing the hearing, or are you?
I think close the hearing and vote on it.
Close and vote, yeah, and then we've got everything we need, we still have lots more meetings to go with the landscape and the other issues. We're voting to close this hearing. Uh, we have a lot of, a lot more engineering work to do, based upon the final report, okay? And approve a, um, if, if the board flies a motion to approve the site plan review with all the corrections, modifications. The flexible landscape plan, um, constant monitoring, et cetera. So, and then phase two timeline? Okay, ZBA, you gotta go back to them, how soon?
Steve approves.
Okay, so, so after here, we're gonna go back into there?
Yes.
So within, hold on.
Yeah.
Okay, so another process through that, through, back to ZBA. Okay, alright, so back to the board, motion to, um, to close?
I'll make the motion to close.
Saccharin.
Oh, Peter?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion to approve with all conditions, restrictions?
Well, what you wanna do is accept the GZA report.
Well, we modified it a little bit with the.
NEED report, as modified, the NEED report, and the hazardous materials, uh, policy.
Okay, and landscape plan.
Can we reference these plans here?
Well, they're going to be, because if we've got anything last minute corrections to make on it, too. Yeah, so, so that's, that's a different, so, um, as Jim motioned, so someone seconded that?
I didn't.
Okay.
Is that, is that, can, can we just approve?
To.
To accept the modified GZA report, the NEED report, and the hazardous material and environmental policy.
And the landscape plan.
And landscape plan. And NFL decision.
In light of the, the purpose, one of the main purposes of this hearing, which is the Aquafer Protection District, I think that one shouldn't likely improve storage on, so it's in the district until further information. So you want us to stay out of the mass GIS zone two? I'm fine with that.
Okay, so motion, and ask the data.
Anything else that, in the, the, or is there?
Well, you got site plan and the aquifer protection for me.
Yeah.
Right, two separate zone.
And, um, cutted water sewer, they put that back there, we're okay with that, did we get a, on aquifer? What was that?
They just gave us a thing, then we get something from them in writing, said it was in zone two, that's all.
That was it, it was clear?
You know, it said some, you know, when.
Zone two was clear?
Right, but we still have to hear from the water and sewer for the aquifer.
Okay, so we don't have a, we don't have water and sewer?
Fire suppression.
When we submitted this, thirty days thing's gone.
Did you vote for them at all?
There were any.
All they, all they ever did was he sent us the thing saying, you know, it was, it was partially in zone two, that's all.
That's it, they didn't have any?
It's this front cutoff.
Yeah, we've extended that zone beyond what town zones.
Yeah.
So they didn't have any, any further restrictions?
No. No, that was the problem.
So then we just approve as, as cited then, and we do?
That, that gets to be a problem, I mean, they wrote that bylaw, gave us the ability to command it, and at the same time, you know, it's like, okay, what do we do?
Well.
You know, it's not like you can, you can walk out on a place and just find the aquifer.
Okay.
It might be over here, it might be over here, it might be straight down the middle, you have no idea where it might be.
It misses how it's everywhere.
It's everywhere, but, but it, it's, that's about all you can say. That's why they have zone two.
Just bear, just bear in mind, Eric's payday, hundreds of thousands of dollars between this whole.
And we didn't find the aquifer.
Sawdust, hundreds of loads of sawdust under that, you know, like, all kinds of sticks and debris and stored lumber. The, the best thing the towns get out of, gonna get out of this when it's all done, a lot of that pavement's gonna be gone, when he, when he gets the approvals he want, there's gonna be way, way less impervious area, right? And he's really not gonna touch the river, and he's gonna touch it very carefully.
Okay, we gotta approve the motion.
So where, where do we stand on this?
So, so we got a motion.
We don't understand the motion either.
A motion to approve.
Yeah.
And we got the aquifer, which is gonna be secondary, so we need to vote on the one that's already here, so we gotta.
Eric, are you in agreement with the GZA recommendations?
Yes.
And the NEED, right?
If, uh, if these plans submitted tonight, we would like them referenced in the decision.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna do.
And the town clerk's gotta get a copy of that, too?
Yeah.
In case that was an oversight. Okay, so motions up and seconded, um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
So the voting manuals, okay, aquifer protection, um, all in favor to approve? Uh, someone quote that motion?
That's what Peter was saying, we need to address those.
Well, if they didn't, if they didn't give a.
We agreed not to put any storage in the area Peter was.
Right, but we're talking about the permit in the zone two, correct, isn't there, don't you have a dual permit right here?
You'll get a site plan and.
Site plan, the act for protection, right, so we need a motion to approve the act for protection.
Motion to approve the aquifer protection.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With additions, correct?
Yeah.
Right.
And the restrictions, yeah. Correct, and it's in, it's all referenced in the report, so.
That was on my report.
Um, you have the bulk storage and the, you keep out of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So. And that's approval with the conditions and restrictions as indicated. Okay, so that clears that. Okay. So be it, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I don't mean to be patronizing, but it was a pleasure for us to be working with.
So noted, so noted, he's got a long drive.
What about us? What about us?
We signed up for this, so, um. Pecker Lane?
We know where we stand.
For the plan, you can have ours.
You wanna give one of these, I'll, I'll get you guys more copies if you want.
Yeah, please do.
Thank you very much, good night.
Good night, thank you very much.
Yep, please come again.
Good night. I hope never see you again.
I'll be, I'll be seeing you soon.
You'll be seeing.
We gotta, we gotta gate pass, you know.
We'll have to set something up for, for inspection, you'll have to get, we'll have to set up an account, we should've said that. We'll see him.
He gave me the code, I can get him a bit.
We can, we can get in.
Oh, so get in pairs.
Yeah, we can, we can get in, Bobby, you know.
Okay, alright, so you. Okay, which plan, where's your mylar? I need one plan, one mylar.
Charlie, how we doing with the sound now, is it alright? Alright, turn.
I got mine on. Good, we turned it on.
Homestead, you're on deck. Okay, Bob, we have the Form A and a check for you. There you go.
What is this?
This is for Pecker Lane, one A and R plan.
Oh, okay.
I got two.
Two?
I thought you wanted two. Three. Me, you, clerk. Three, okay. And the corrections, I see circles, set back, pool removed, driveway access, it's on the plan. Okay, before us here, we have, um, Pecker Lane plan. Six, located at number thirteen, Form A plan A and R, under visual control law, this has been submitted, um, before, had some corrections, the corrections appear to be complete, this confirmation from the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, Form A plan and said check to the town of Groveland is here, um, motion to endorse the Form A.
Let me, let me see.
We had him put the driveway on, the circle, um, the road, and then the notes, you have met with the highway commissioner.
What I don't see is a topographical, to see where the water's flowing off the property.
Yeah, it's got topo on there, but.
It's topo, it's flat.
Is it that light that I can't see it?
Oh, no, it doesn't have.
Yeah, there's topo.
Yeah, this, the lines are real light.
Oh, yeah, they're real light, you can't see it, Bob.
Yeah, alright, yeah, I'm barely making them out now, yeah. Alright. Can you read which ways it's sloping? I only see that number, where's the next number?
It's like thirty?
Looks like thirty-two.
Is that USGS?
I don't know, I don't know what that is.
Jesus, yeah, you can't, you can barrel it, see?
Buy some ink.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I got.
You come, which way is it sloping? Do you, do you know, have an idea?
What, thirty-two?
I mean, eleven pecker is pretty flat.
It's five foot.
There's really not many lines, right, I mean, it's a five foot scale.
Yeah.
And there's not a five foot drop across the lot, or perhaps it's five feet.
Okay, is it any, any of the lawn, proposed lawn pitch to the road?
Thirty-six up here, Bob.
To Pecker Lane?
No, that's thirty-fourth.
Okay.
Yeah, right there, thirty-fourth. Two foot increments, thirty-two, thirty-four, thirty-six.
Your roof drains are gonna be underground, right?
Right, yes.
Yeah, they're gonna put in the swale.
Bent to the water and sewer to see if they're, when they're gonna run the water and sewer lineup?
Uh, we, we need to go talk with water and sewer. We have a design of a sewer plan that, that, that we formed after talking with Mr. Cusick.
Alright, so when that's done, and the road, uh, to make it passable on the path that's not hut-topped either way, and to get the water that's running off in the, what Bob and I were talking about is a minute swale down to the catch basin on Main Street, that goes under Main into the river. So we were talking about an open throat catch basin, to catch any water, because everything's downhill to the river. To catch that, because the houses down the bottom, we don't wanna flood any of their little yards out, it's very narrow there and everything, it's gotta run to that catch basin. So.
My understanding is, uh, Mr. Kelly has met with Mr. Arcalian, and they're, and they're in agreement on a, on a reasonable way to handle this.
Larry, are you gonna be able to put the minute swale in the property?
Yeah, I'm gonna do the work there, and right now, prior to them doing anything, it was actually an old, broken up.
Clay pipe or something?
Asphalt going straight down at those houses. They've already sloped the right side back, okay, it's a fairly gentle slope, Bobby met me out there, we're gonna put the water main on the left side, the swale on the right side, as you're looking down the river, the swale's gonna be, uh, s- a stone, you know?
Okay, riprap or?
Yeah, riprap, then a grass swale up to the lots in their right, it's, it's a fairly gentle slope, we took the material out, we took skip shanful loom pile out, and then that open throat would tie into the existing basin, but that's really almost overflow water, it's just gonna come off that little road, I think Bobby's, Bobby's recommended one two inch coat of sixteen feet of pavement, it's not a new subdivision now. It's, he, we're trying to bring something up the grade economically, so they can build the houses and it'll be better for the town.
All right, as, as you know, Larry, the hot top doesn't really mean anything without a good sub base, so you're going to. Yeah, we're gonna do a good gravel.
Do whatever you and him call me to do, we're figuring twelve inches of state spec gravel with probably a crown to the swale on the right, looking down at the river, it'll kinda crown to the right, okay, so twelve inches of state spec gravel and two inches of asphalt, you know? Unfortunately, they would like to get some help from the water and sewer department, the sewer, the water department wants the main to go from the river to, uh, all the way up to, um.
Godness.
Yeah, and, you know, it's, it's financially almost catastrophic, you know, it's ridiculous, you know, I don't wanna see them do wells, I'm sure, you know, the town would rather have water, but the water, or it's kind of unreasonable, but as far as the road construction, uh, they only have three lots there, it's gonna be a big improvement, you know? And I'm gonna do it, you know?
What, what type of sewer, is it gonna connect to the sewer or?
Yeah, we're gonna connect to the sewer and come up on gravity and have several manhoods, uh, obviously you don't want septic systems, you know?
When you say riffraff, what I'd probably would like to see is like inch and a half stone, so that if any vehicle tires, like an oil truck or something like that, can actually, if they have to squeeze over, they're gonna ride on that.
No problem, we'll do that with soil.
It's easy to maintain.
We would do that with soil stabilization cloth underneath it, it's just gonna be a big improvement as to what's there, you know?
Okay.
All right, so before us is the A and R, which is what we're doing on, you guys are glad we, we cited all that, um, we have a motion to approve the A and R that's submitted and corrected.
So motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the voting animals, get your Mylar.
This one's ours, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we keep taking.
Does he have a level, there it is.
Okay, gentlemen, Mylar coming down. Okay, on your Form A is timestamp like clerk tomorrow, or she gets one, we get one, you get one, one goes over with your Mylar, and the same goes six certified by that. Okay, you've got our paper copy?
Yep. Everybody wants to sign that as well?
Yeah. Thank you very much, okay, yeah, yeah, the one online is way out. Homestead Lane.
All right, just hold on a minute, we're gonna do this again.
Figure out the date?
Well, we put all the dates on.
And who, who actually submitted the extension?
I guess I am, because I'm the owner.
Okay, and then you're gonna transfer later, okay, so then you're gonna, okay, all right, onto that. Okay.
You want data too?
Yeah.
You're gonna bring it back, so many copies, six.
Bob and Bob will sign that one over there. See the Mylar, you don't need anything else, right? Yeah, this. Yeah, yeah. Okay, um.
This is us, right? This is us.
Yeah, yeah, okay, um, should it say extend the subdivision, requesting an extension? Yeah, just requesting an extension of the subdivision. Uh, for three years. Okay, you gotta add in there for an extension for three years, you put. Right, right, it's not, it's not a permit, it's just an extension of the subdivision.
It's this button, that's the sign.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is our sign.
So can we say to extend the subdivision approval, known as Homestead Lane, that's it, I've been for three years, so just put approval after that, is that okay?
I'm just gonna read it into the record of vote on. At the moment, it just doesn't save her.
This is, this is still what, five house, single family house lots?
Everything's the same, yeah.
And it's also including the, your, the original house on that as well, correct, which makes what, six?
Right, right, it's the same. There we go.
Okay, okay, all right, just wanna make sure the single family house is going up and that's it, not duplexes, all right?
And you're current with all your taxes, right?
Give us a briefing and all, right?
Ask them.
Okay, yes, okay, this is just.
He's current with all the taxes.
Okay, so, you guys are blocking.
Here's a question, are you current with all the taxes on that entire property?
The ownership on it, it's very, it's important, it has to be paid.
Yeah, because, I mean, we're not supposed to let it go through, if you're not.
I, my mortgage company pays my taxes, so.
Okay.
And that's the entire lot?
Before Dahula buys it, they'll be paid.
Okay, so, so just for the record, before we're reading in here on today's date, we have a request from, from the owner, okay?
Who is?
Christopher Dark, to extend, and I'll read it into the record, Homestead Lane subdivision, uh, for three additional years, which is allowed under the subdivision control law of Groveland. Uh, and the letter says, I hereby request the Groveland planning board to extend the subdivision approval known as Homestead Lane, Accessors Map seventeen, Lot seventy-four Alpha, Lot seventy-four, for three years to June ten, twenty eighteen, subdivision was approved on June ten, oh eight, decision filed on June twenty-five, oh eight, decision dated five, twenty-seven, oh eight. Plan book four-three-seven, Plan ninety-nine, approval book, uh, two-eight-zero-three-two, page twenty-seven, two-seventy-five. Uh, motion to, uh, extend Homestead Lane subdivision for three years as committed.
So motion, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the voting animals, so the subdivision extended for three years, okay, now. Yes, you gotta go get this over to the town clerk, and then you're gonna record it over to them, so.
Now, it's very important, it gets recorded right away, not what happened.
Yeah, it's, I mean, you know, we can't keep doing this, okay, I mean, this is the third one, so.
We went through ten years of the worst real estate recession in history.
Oh, when, when did that happen?
It started ten years ago.
Did you go out of business?
No, no, only, only because I worked seven days a week.
We haven't seen you for years.
Walter drove me out of the town, and Barbara Shan drove me out of the town, now I'm just building roads.
Easy on the throwing out of town stuff.
Oh.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I still tell that story about Matthew Drive, you rebuilding that bridge.
Larry, did they call you the Highwayman now?
But the only thing, I built eleven subdivisions and they're all accepted, and it wasn't easy to do.
At least we're black and white.
Is that all they, is that all they're doing with this? Explain to the people what we just did.
Yes.
Yeah, is anyone here that has a question on what we just did for Homestead?
No, but is that all they're gonna do, that, aren't we gonna?
Homestead Lane, for those watching at home, a subdivision approval is good for seven years in Groveland, and that one was expiring, we do have a, uh, allowance in the subdivision regulations for completing of a subdivision to extend it three years, the applicant has to do a lot.
Let's get a, what are they gonna do? We should get a plan that up to their plan.
Yeah, they're gonna come back in and give us a whole presentation, but for those at home, the subdivision was extended for two years.
Schedule, yeah, are they gonna start?
Yeah, they're gonna come back in and give a whole.
Larry Kelly, do you have a, approximate schedule or anything?
No, Steve, Steve's in charge of the whole show, I may or may not build the road, I like, I wanna build the road for him, we're working that out now.
Okay, he's, he's gonna contact me with a schedule. You're gonna give us a schedule.
We have the fairways up next.
You're gonna give us a schedule.
We're, we're talking about something, Wally, okay?
Never you're.
We.
You guys, we're moving up next on the agenda. I understand the Brooklyn.
Well, I gotta go, then.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's right, you wanna just.
I don't know where they went.
Okay.
He, he has to be, we're gonna be talking about him, he has to be.
Where'd he go?
I don't, that, all three of them, maybe they just stepped out for air.
He's still here because his, uh, three cases out there.
They're negotiating out there, all right.
I'm Sarah Farinato, that's my husband, Justin.
Okay, you want, the tape, well.
Well, stay there.
Stay there.
Okay.
And you're number six?
No, is this the trees?
No, we're three fairway.
Three.
Which one is?
Three fairway.
Um, we had, um, issues with the landscaping.
Your trees? Okay.
Uh, the loom and also a tree that's in, in our front yard.
Okay.
And then along, we have other problems as well, with inside, inside the house, with, um, the walls, the ceilings.
Right, you talked to me earlier.
Okay, yeah.
The, uh, inside of the house is a separate matter.
Right, that's, yeah.
What, what we wanna hear tonight is just the outside, the landscaping and.
Yep.
You mentioned a tree?
Yes, um, there is a, a tree that is in the front yard.
Is this one of the two trees that required that he plant in the each, each house lot?
No, this, this tree, um, it was actually, um, it was actually on the lot already, and we asked that it at least be filled, and he said that, um, it could possibly kill the tree if it was filled, and I said that that wasn't a problem if they needed to, to take the tree down.
You, you wanna level the ground around it, yeah.
Right.
It just pools with water.
Yeah, all over it was, uh.
And it's also not straight.
Yeah.
It just looks terrible, it's like an ice.
That was there for the whole time?
Yes.
Yeah, he said he could not remove it.
Why not?
He said the town didn't want him to, but then.
It wasn't a located tree.
All right, we need him in here, though, so.
What, what are you suggesting?
That they removed the tree, yeah.
I'd like it removed and just filled.
That's an easy fix, okay.
Right.
All right.
We've went, we've gone over this with them many times, through phones and emails.
Okay, that's it, any other landscape issues?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Um, yeah, the other issue was, um, the, the yard is supposed to be loomed twenty to thirty feet around the disturbed areas, according to the specs.
Yeah.
Um, around the perimeter of the house, it wasn't done at all, they brought in a, a small pile of loom, and they basically used that pile just to kinda grade, um, the yard, so it was.
Yeah, it's supposed to have six inches of loom all over the whole lot.
There's definitely not that.
Right, there's not.
All right, so.
When he said that it was loomed.
And I, I can show you pictures of where they actually, uh.
Those are after he said he loomed it, and this is before, when he said there was loom down, what we found in it.
They put a little bit of, of loom around the tree, and.
This is after he said he had it loomed it the first time, we moved in in December.
This picture here, there's just a little bit of loom here, and in front of the house they did, they kinda just put it sporadically around like the low spots.
What are these?
But it's not enough to even plant the grass.
Grass is in.
Right.
It's a dry well.
Oh, dry well.
And I, I did put some grass seed down because we said that we were gonna supply the grass seed, so I put some down just because of how late in the year it's getting.
What's it look like now?
Tell the soil at all?
Right, I tried to, yes, but it's all underneath, it's, it's very rocky.
Clay, rock.
All rocks.
Is this all done by the.
Still running or not?
It was done by Potter, I think it's called, out of Oxford.
Well, he brought some in because we complained that there wasn't enough to grow our own grass, and we did, we waved our own, yeah, we waved our grass seed.
That's after the loom, the pictures, which is.
I just talked to him on the phone the other day about all this, and he said that this is about a bug beyond.
George heard the landscaper. There we go, that's, that's not right.
When he gets, when he gets in here, I'll explain to you what, Walter.
Yeah.
When he gets in here.
Yeah.
Delve into it, but what I've been told is that in December, he put loom down, and then through the winter, it dissipated and ran off and everything, so now he brought.
That was, that was after the winter, that was in our, yeah.
He said he put down screened loom, I was like, how did that fall through the screening process then?
And this. And then he brought in a little bit of loom just last week, and not enough, right? And he was.
When it was, after it was done in the spring.
He was filling in where it needed it.
Right, okay.
He needs to do more, so.
So, yeah, you, you know, that's, you're not the first person to want to land here, but you know what happens in a new subdivision, you, you know, you put stuff down, the erosion comes, you just gotta go back and address it, it's not a big deal.
Right, right.
Um, with that, now you've got trees too, right?
Yeah, I'm, I need trees, um, for the contract that was.
Right, so how many are missing?
Sorry?
How many are missing?
Well, it's nine trees that are physically dead.
Yeah.
And there's three more that are, should be considered dead, so a total of twelve.
We need twelve more trees.
Yes, but they have to be equally in size to the ones that did.
What caused them to be dead?
I'm sorry?
What caused them to go dead?
No idea.
Were you watering them at all?
We were watering them, and he said that we were not, my wife, my mother-in-law, myself, and if we weren't watering, with all due respect, we wouldn't have seventeen of them.
Yeah.
They're all in one line, and they would be replaced within one year of being planted, I contacted him.
Keep those pictures out, because when he gets in here.
Okay.
What's your, what's your name?
Justin and Sarah.
What is it?
Justin and Sarah.
Okay.
Okay, now who's, who's your George Manell?
I'm Adam Costa, council.
I N.
Council.
C O. Uh, for, for George and Josh.
For George and Josh, okay, okay, who's your landscaper, George?
Uh, my landscaper is Josh Padden.
Okay, so it looks like we just got some.
Just a couple more there.
We got some erosion from what we've seen here.
Thank you.
Um, we got some dead trees over there that, that stuff happens, um, we've got, judging from the photographs we saw, you know, loom goes down in the middle of December, you know, it's trying to do the right thing, but erosion, we had a horrible winter, so it's just gonna get redone, so, um, from what we see out there, that's, that's what's gonna happen, this, it's just part of the subdivision, it's really, nobody's fault that Mother Nature dropped on us, so, but it does have to be addressed, so what's your pitch for the fix?
Well, we seen the pictures of, Bob's been down there recently, right?
Yeah.
We came again and shimmed up with some loom to the driveways and the walkways, we raked it again.
Yeah.
And, um, we feel that we, I mean, they have water going on it now, I'm assuming they've seeded it at this point.
Yeah, but those pictures were taken a week ago?
Yep.
These pictures were just taken, yes.
Well, those, those are from before, and that, those before, uh, Chris Porter came?
No, they were after. We have some from before and some that are from after.
We have some, yeah, this is stairs and stuff.
What, what are you paying for a yard of loom?
Um, I don't know, I'm probably paying fifteen, sixty dollars a year, I'm sure.
This is, this is from when it was just, uh.
Okay.
It's inch minus, it's inch minus loom, and I believe that regulations are two inch or less, so we're putting down inch minus loom.
Okay.
And, um.
And how deep, because you gotta have six inches.
Six inches, but I believe that, I mean, it certainly is compressed, um, from when we put it on, and gee, and when did we close on your house, uh?
December.
December.
Yeah.
But most of it washed away, and what was in it, and you saw the pictures of what was in it.
Yeah, it's, it's gotta be thick, so what's, what's, do you have a plan to fix it right now?
Walter, let me, let me tell him what he needs to do.
Go ahead.
I've been planting grassy for forty years, and when you put the loom down that you did in December, it got packed down.
Right.
Okay, now, to fix this problem, you need to dress up with new loom, and then you need to harrow it. Okay, now, to fix this problem, you need to dress up with new loom, and then you need to harrow it, to loosen up all that packed loom, then yark rake it again, and then they can plant the grass seed. And all the loom that's supposed to be there will be soft enough to accept the roots to grow. So, that's what you need to do to straighten out theirs. And as far as the tree that's in a hollow that fills up with water and just stagnates there, they'd like the tree removed. And that would be an easy thing with a bucket, you know, just rip it out of there and fill that hollow in. They don't want it, and you don't need to replace it. So, I think that would alleviate your problem, right?
Yes.
That's what I want you to do.
Yeah, the tree was supposed to be on the plan. That's why we wanted to remove the tree from the beginning, and planting was part of the-
Right, we require two trees planted per lot.
Yes, do you have two trees on each lot in there?
We do.
Okay.
But-
You were counting that one?
Yes, and that was, that was, and that was a request of when we went through the whole procedure.
So, if he removes that tree, okay, and doesn't plant another tree, you gonna be alright with that?
That's fine.
Good, good.
Okay.
Okay, so that solves that. This, um, when was this done?
When was it done? That was just signed recently.
That letter was just signed. No, no, I mean, it says that it was completed, but when?
Well, all different, all different stages of when the homes were completed.
Well, you know, you had a very large disturbed area when you built the subdivision. It's gonna happen. This isn't anyone's fault that Mother Nature does what it does, especially in the middle of winter. You're trying, you're trying to put stuff down to meet the requirements with the closing in December, et cetera. The grass is not gonna grow in December.
Right.
Okay, so you're gonna get erosion. If, uh, probably, looking back with hindsight, maybe a lot of hay bales, but then he still would've had to rake it anyway. At the end of the day, with all that erosion washing down, you still would've had to re-rake it.
With just a yark rake, it's not enough. He's gotta get deeper, four inches down minimum, to loosen up all that-
Well, indeed, what they used was a, was a machine on the back to get, to get it down and flush it out.
Okay.
It's, it, in other words, whoever thought that loom and seed was gonna take in December, okay, really miscalculated?
We didn't put seed down. And we didn't even, we didn't even yark rake it.
That could've been, looking back now, I bet you could've held back on that with some money in escrow and said, you know what?
It would've been better.
This is not the time of year to put it down. Let's do it in the spring. But, that's maybe for future. Okay, so right now, we gotta fix this. So you gotta go back in. You gotta get the machine out. It's gonna cost you. You've gotta put more loom in, and you gotta make it right on all of them. And it's really not your fault that some of this stuff can happen, so don't take it personally with that. But it is part of the process, and it has to be addressed. And it's simple. We're just talking loom and seed here. It's nothing.
I guess that, you know, the, the applicant's in a different, difficult position when you're selling lots. Obviously, over the course of the year, you're negotiating with individual purchasers, and you're negotiating with their lenders.
Yeah.
And, you know, we've got, we've got a list here of individual lots that my client was kind enough to prepare for me, explaining the negotiation that occurred, and when the loom was gonna have to go down, and when it would be seeded based upon the time of year. So, it, it, it puts the applicant in a difficult position, having to spend the money to get this done, often at the buyer's request, at the lender's request, only then to be told they've gotta do it a second time.
For you as a builder, uh, if you're going into winter, just line item that, escrow, okay? And stick it in escrow and refuse to put the stuff down, uh, except what's required to, to, you know, hold it, some hay bales, et cetera. Cause it's gonna happen every time.
Can I just make a comment?
Yeah.
We were told that there's a spring punch list that, that was supposed to be gone through, and this would be addressed then. And we, that hasn't been done yet, so I don't know if this was on that list or not.
Well, it's, it's gonna be addressed now, so that's, that's gonna be taken care of. Okay, so how many trees are there? If that, we're supposed to have two per lot, that's one. Is there another?
Yes.
Okay, so, and you really want that one out of there?
They didn't want the side one, so.
Okay, and it's not near the sidewalk, is it?
No.
No, it's away from it.
It's, it's away from it?
Yeah, it's kinda right in the middle of the front yard on that side.
Okay.
That hole will be filled, right?
Yes, and-
Pull it out, get it filled in.
Loomed in.
Yeah, I guess we're gonna move the tree, yeah.
So, that's an easy fix.
I just want some type of, you know, how, you know, am I gonna work with Bob individually to determine how much loom is put down? Or not just, you know?
Well, we need six, you need six inches of loom, and core it. I mean, loom, not, not stuff that's-
So because I've put down six inches now, and some is compressed, right, I just have to keep filling it until it's six inches, even though-
That's why you don't do it in the fall.
After you loosen up enough under that hard pack, I can tell.
October fifteen, that's what your regulations say.
So, but if you're gonna put seed down-
Just following the regulations, I should just be waiting till the spring?
No, you need to stabilize a lot, but when you're planting seed, I mean, you don't put six-
That's what the regulations say. The regulations clearly state, it does not need to be stabilized. The regulations say I have to put down six inches of loom, seed it.
Right.
And that's done. They decided with me that they didn't want it seeded, so we put down the six inches of loom.
But George, it's not gonna grow in December. It doesn't matter.
I understand that, Wally, but this is what they're, this is what they wanted. They-
Okay, that's, that's where your expertise comes in over, over something. You're just gonna have to, you're gonna do it. But we'll, we'll get to that later, okay? So, from now on, when you get into that, I would recommend, uh, that you escrow that, you know, for future homeowners, cause it's not gonna grow.
And that's typically our preference, but I mean, I think you're, again, I, I think that the board to some extent is putting us in a difficult position because you're telling us, well, your expertise has to govern, but we're, we're trying to negotiate with the purchaser, and isn't the purchaser always right? The purchaser says, I don't want you to seed the lawn.
You know what? I, that's where you need to be firm. Look, I, I don't wanna seed this, okay, because it's not gonna grow in December, okay? And, uh, that's just something in a negotiation between the parties. It's really not here, but we have to address it now, so we're going to. Um, so the tree's done. We're gonna get out there, redo the seeding with that. We got twelve, twelve trees we gotta address over here. What's the solution for this?
Solution to this is very clear, and Bob O'Hanley will, I'm sure, back me up on this. I was, two things with, uh, Mr. Monday, right, when we first were doing the subdivision. If the board can remember, I'm not sure if you can recollect what went down. He asked us to put a fence up, okay?
Yeah.
On the side of his lawn, on the side of his house. Um, we made an agreement that I was gonna give him twenty-five hundred dollars to put up a vinyl fence, that of course never has gone up, and we agreed to put a certain number of trees on his property, right?
Yeah, I remember.
And Bob Ericanlian put the trees in. They, he put them in. They were alive when we put them in. After that, it was his responsibility to water the trees. Bobby Ericanlian called me, I'm sure he talked to Bob O'Hanley, saying, the guy isn't watering his trees, guy isn't watering his trees. Some of the trees, over the course of time, because it was very dry at that time, died. Mr. Monday did tell me that his mother was watering the trees a couple of months later. He said, my mother's been watering them since the beginning, which I'm just going-
I have an underground sprinkler system.
First of all, okay, um, just let me finish. I'm going off of what Mr. O'Carroll, Ericanlian has said. I brought it to Bob O'Hanley's attention, saying, you can clearly drive by and see that they haven't been watered. And now I'm being penalized because, uh, his trees have, have died. Bobby Ericanlian, just to prove a point, Bobby Ericanlian, on that, on that crazy berm he built, had a bunch of trees there, right? He had maybe three or four trees die, okay, throughout the, the, one of the toughest winters we've ever had. Probably seventy percent of his trees died. So what does that tell you about the care that Mr. Monday took to those trees? I feel like I'm being taken advantage of on this, and I'm not, you know, I don't agree with-
That is, excuse me, but that's probably the most absurd thing I've ever heard.
Okay, well, ask Mr. O'Hanley. He, uh, he agreed with me at the time, and we spoke about it.
Well, I've been talking with Bob myself, and he said, per contract, the agreement we had, George, in your words, a man is as good as his words, is his, what, is what he can do and what he can say. You planted the trees. We had an agreement by contract. It said, within one year, if they die, you will replace them. I watered those trees. I have an underground sprinkler system that's on all the time. My mother-in-law's been watering them, and my wife was watering them. So how is it that we have two-thirds of the trees that did survive and one-third didn't? Explain that to me.
Let me explain something, that you're, you're lying right now. Uh, I said that I-
Alright, right, hold, 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 okay. Here's what we got. We, we've got subdivisions all over. We just had four forty-one Main Street in here. They put up a set of trees. Half of those died, okay? Uh, we're not gonna figure out who did what, whatever. The tree's in, if he's got a contract, okay, for one year, okay, we'll take a look at that. I do remember the conversation about the trees. If you plant trees and the subdivision is still going on, you gotta go replace them. And who's your landscaper? Doesn't sound like he's-
They're on his lawn. They're his trees. They're not on the subdivision.
But you planted them, so, so, you know, and we're talking short money here. You're, you're gonna be paying this fellow more than to replace some trees. So, it's kinda-
Walter, we, we had them in front of us.
Yeah.
And George, you did agree to replace the dead ones in front of the board. I remember that.
If he didn't take it, if the ones that died, that-
Is that underground sprinkler system visible?
I'm sorry?
Is, is there a pipe visible that goes under that? Can you see it somewhere?
The hedge wall.
Okay, how long's that been in?
Since I bought the house.
Okay, so we got an automatic sprinkler system that's putting on the trees.
I'd like to see that sprinkler system on. I've never seen it on.
Right, I, I actually-
This is absolutely amazing, George.
Okay, well, we're not gonna get into it next year.
Wait a minute. You said after the trees were dead and I contacted you, that you would come over and replace them. I still have the text message from you.
Now, what I said was, the trees that initially died, because I do believe that they weren't watered, and I acquiesced to replace a few of the trees, I said, but you need to be watering them. And that's when Bob Ericanlian told me specifically that Mr. Monday has not been watering them.
Okay, look, timeout. We're, we're not gonna get it-
How somebody can sit here and lie like this?
Okay, hold on. We're, the trees are gonna get replaced. Now, whether, one or another, if I'll go out there, I need to walk the subdivision myself. I'll be out there probably this weekend, okay? I'll take a look at it. I was out there the other day driving around, okay? Um, leave me your contact numbers, George, along with your landscaper. I want a meeting with him. Okay, you have too many issues on landscaping in one subdivision that I haven't heard in twenty-three years, and I don't know what it is, okay? So, maybe it's nothing, maybe it's just the winter, but-
We've had the worst winter in thirty-five years.
Absolutely, I agree. So, there should be an allowance within the way you do business on a bad winter, that you gotta replace some stuff, and it's no sense getting riled up over here.
These were dying before this past winter.
I agree. Maybe they were, but because you never know what you're gonna get out of a nursery, okay? But, they still have to be replaced. So, it, it's really a non-issue. It has to be done. Let's just make arrangements, get it done, okay? And then we won't have any more arguing or fighting going that way, so it's still something.
It's very important that their yard gets done within the next two weeks because of the seeding, if they wanna get grass growing.
Yeah.
That has to be done immediately.
And, and how'd you make out with that French drain?
Uh, we're supposed to put it in next week. I said it within two weeks, we were gonna get it done.
Okay, and that's-
We did, actually, I, actually, if you talk to Eric now, I feel that he's satisfied with what's been done, because-
It's the twenty-five-year storm we're worried about, a hundred years.
No, everything's fine with number six, Eric.
Okay, okay. And so in the French drain system, what's the proposal for that?
He told me, at this point, he didn't want us digging up his lawn.
Everything tightened up and they're relandscaping. Nothing's gonna sit there.
Did you crown it?
It'll be fine.
Uh, I put a nice, small swale into it, yeah, so it's been-
What's under the swale?
What's under the swale?
And the grass grows, there's nothing, and it won't need any.
Alright, we'll take a look at that.
So is the board coming out to look at the trees to make a determination?
I'll, I'll come out to look at the trees. They're, they're gonna have to get replaced. The board already made a determination. They gotta get replaced, but I wanna see this for myself.
On, on what, on what basis do they need to be replaced? I mean, I understand that they were installed. There's no requirement that there be some form of quarantine.
If they've got a contract that says a year, we have a live subdivision going on.
Where's, where's that contract?
Can you, uh, produce that, uh, email?
You, you should have.
I brought in seven copies of it to you about four months ago.
Alright, so-
George, you have a copy.
Let's just make this a, uh, a non-issue. Okay, okay, it's really not. It's no sense getting riled up about it. And you know what? We've had subdivision, that man that was just in here, Mr. Kelly, okay? And I referenced Matthew Dry for him. He put in a subdivision, closed on it, and there was issues with it four years later, okay? Some of the trees died, some of them didn't take, uh, there was a rip wraps, a problem.
That was on Evergreen, yeah.
Um, well, this one was Matthew, and, uh, he went in there. We asked him to put in just some stone, cause it was eroding, okay? He went in there and spent a week of his own time and his own dime, and he said, you know what? This didn't come out the way we wanted. This isn't the way that it should've been, and I'm taking care of it. And he just redid the whole thing, and he even rebuilt this woman's bridge over there and replaced every single tree down there, okay? And you don't know what you're gonna get out of the nursery, um, you never know what's gonna happen, so there's no sense blaming anybody. But you wanna, George, you wanna finished product because you've got another subdivision going, and you don't want people driving down there checking out the new, the other subdivision and say, well, what happened over there? So, you really want a showcase kind of a thing.
Right, and also, George, the board bent over backwards to let you finish that project in December, you know? So, we, we bent over backwards for you. You, you need to take care of these residents.
And don't take it personally, either. I don't want you to think we're undercapping you. This is a business thing. We, we have to do this with the board. We have to, we have to get things going. But stuff happens on subdivisions. It's, it's an immense, a lot of things coming together at the same time. So, you can't blame one thing on one person or anything like that. It, it just happens. So, and we know that, and we have seen this for decades. So, it's just a simple fix. Get the trees replaced, we'll get the landscaping done. You're gonna have happy customers. Uh, you've got another subdivision coming down the pike that you wanna do, and you want people to look at your work. So, um, and you can't blame, I mean, Mother Nature really took a tumble on New England, so there's really not much you can do about that. Uh, everybody got hit with that. So, um, but contact numbers would be helpful. Folks, do I have yours?
Um, you might have mine, but we'll give them to you then.
Okay, and then that, we'll just take down on that. Uh, you folks get together with the contracts?
What time frame do you think?
Well, you said within two weeks.
I'll, I'll talk to Bob Ericanlian. He's the one that put the trees in, so.
Okay.
For, for these people, within two weeks though, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll take care of that.
I, I do wanna, I do would like to meet on site with you, Bob.
Yeah.
Go through exactly what we're to do and make sure, you know, they're in agreement with it, you know?
Um, I just had one other thing I wanted to, uh, to bring up, and it was the, the front steps, um-
Cast?
Yeah, they're cast, and then-
Those would be shimmed.
Are they not level?
Yeah, they sunk down in the front.
It hap, it hap, it happens.
That happens.
You know, there's, there's bolts on the back of it, the shade.
Yeah, those are fine.
The shade puts on, and so what happens is your steps are tied in to a foundation that goes all the way to a footing eight feet down.
I'm familiar with it.
That's, that's the footing that's under there?
It's gonna be shimmed up. No, it's attached to a wall that has a footing all, all the way down.
But what I mean in the front, there's just like a patio brick that it's sitting on, and it looks like the whole thing sunk down in the front.
And that's, and that's, and that's typical what happens, you know, after, especially after, you know, a tough winter that we've had and the settling, but that is going to be shimmed up and repaired.
Yeah, that's-
And I, I mean, also, it looks like the steps are like, they're like falling off.
Well, I sent, I sent Shay to, um, to, because it's their product. They're going to inspect it. What they typically do is they go out and the, the guy who does all the inspections wants to make sure that the homeowner didn't-
Are these concrete?
What are you looking at?
Prefab.
Yeah.
When they backfill around the foundation, you're always gonna get sediment, and they can shim that up and fix that.[1619.64]
And Shay, Shay will, uh, warranty their product if, if they find that, you know, it's a, it's an issue with the, with the concrete.
You know, if you look at, if you look at homes that, that weren't, they go back and shim, have you seen them, and they're like falling over, and over years, they, they actually will pull off over time, they'll, they'll actually pull off.
Because they did, they separated from the top so that there's a big space up at the top now, and I just, I mean, it's only about two humps.
The settling though, that's, that's gonna happen, and you're, it's good that that happened now with the settling, because now it's firm underneath and compacted.
Right.
So, when he shims it back up, that'll come right up, that's normal, that's, that's pretty normal.
Okay, now, should there be some type of, um, like a footing in the front of them, no?
No, it's usually just compacted on the, on the ground.
Really, okay.
Yeah, because the stone, you have stone.
They're attached to the, to the foundation of the house, right, yeah, they're hanging, they're hanging.
And that's very typical standard application of shade concrete, they do hundreds of thousands of them a year, you know?
Yeah, that, I've seen that, that's not a problem, that, that's an easy fix, just as long as they get the level on it, which I'm sure they're gonna do.
We have that spring punch list that we have to go through, so we still need to be, I think, checking it on.
Okay, well, that's, that part's between the parties, we get, we get all this, all this stuff taken care of. Okay, and George, thank you for, for addressing this, um, I really do appreciate that, okay? Um, and I think it'll just work out just fine under that, um, and, you know, just chalk it up for.
I mean, I think going forward, we have two other lots that, um, we need to, we need to loom up, right, because we're doing some earthwork for lot seven and lot eight, and we're completing the retaining lots for lot seven tomorrow. The excavator's gonna be there to do final grading, uh, either Thursday, Friday, it'll be completed by Monday, because lot seven has their own third-party landscaper coming in doing their work for them.
Okay.
I wanna make sure I have Bob there and we drop the loom, I don't care if we need to pull out a tape measure or whatever, and I just want you to sign off on it and say, it's been, it's been done, you know, to standards and.
Yeah, he's, we do this all the time on inspections, he goes out there, documents it all, he'll stick it in the, right in the loom for you, take a picture. I, I completely understand where you're coming from on that, so they'll, they'll address that issue, um, on that, we do that with paving all the time, uh, when he's good out there, he's always got his ruler with him, checking everything, so.
Well, I, I made a special operation that I can adjust the point of it steel, of how many inches, so I can stick that up as it's going. The contractors hate me out there.
Well, you saved Valley Farm Road from.
Yeah.
Fueling up after, it is, that they, we're missing a whole inch.
Wow.
Whole inch in the road, so that's.
And I'll, I'll contact Bob Ericanlian tomorrow, let him know that, you know, Mr. Monday's requesting that he gets his trees replaced and, you know, Bob put the trees in.
Okay.
So, I would assume he's gonna, we'll take care of it.
In, in, do we have a time frame?
I have to talk to Bob on that, so.
Try to get it within a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks?
Well, we should wrap everything up, just around the same time, so, within a day or so.
I can report back to, uh, to Wally and, and Bob after I speak with Bob, I might know.
Right, and when, when those are replaced, it's gonna be critical, because it's gonna be June and July, so there's gonna have to be a lot of water on it.
Once I replace them, and they're green.
Yeah, yeah.
That's it.
Yeah, you guys gotta get work, but that's where you're gonna come in, okay, he replaces them, okay, the second time, he fulfills his obligation.
They're aligned when I put them in.
Do me a favor, George, when you put the trees in, tell me who the nursery is and the date that you bought them, and if they do die, I'm gonna water the hell out of them, if they die, I will go back to the nursery and take it up with them.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, fair enough.
That'll, that'll work on.
Good.
Okay, anything else? Thank you all for coming in, George, thank you very much, I really appreciate that.
George, Testy Way, what's?
We just completed the test pits, and the winter was especially tough, not only on sites, but on getting out there during test pits, and so Larry Kelly was out there for the past three weeks, getting all the data, finally got it done. And we are working on the definitive plan as we speak.
All right, let me know when to post, we're gonna meet on the first Tuesday and the third Tuesday of June, so.
Yeah.
If you're ready, give me, I gotta have two days in advance and not a weekend.
You got it.
To post them.
I'll make sure that, uh, I'm periodically notified.
Need your contact information?
Yes.
Do you have a pen?
Wally, I have your email address, I can just email you again, any problem.
Yeah, and send pictures, you know, any good question, you know, we, we work around the clock, uh, on that, I'm gonna borrow your second half, your letter, your contact information here, um, phone number, I'm gonna put your phone number, and everything. Um, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you guys. Thank you, Sarah.
Okay.
Here's my contact information.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Huh?
Very popular.
Oh, yes, they are.
Oh, God, it goes, hey.
Yeah, yeah, everyone caring, you really take care of them.
Okay.
Make them last.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay.
So, we, yeah, we wanna, I know the house stuff's another thing, and we're giving them a chance to make it right.
Yeah.
But unfortunately.
And, and, you know, you have a new subdivision, a new home, a lot of stuff coming in, you, you know, punch list, it happens, right, there, you know?
Well, what hap, I mean, unfortunately, it was, got rewired when we noticed it, the cracks in the ceilings and walls, and it's just, it's pretty, it's pretty, it's not, well, it's not settling though, right?
Well, all right, you can get to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did he fix the air conditioner or the, uh?
Yeah.
Was it microwave and air conditioner?
Yeah, we got a new air conditioner, it was not working.
You know, some of this stuff isn't his fault, but he's.
Oh, absolutely, we know that, no, we know that.
They did their job taking care of that stuff, I admit they, you know, they were quick with the, uh, the air conditioning, even if they came that day and put a new one in, so.
She does get back to you quickly.